Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for being here with us this evening. My name is Cindy Bonyer, and I am the President/CEO of the Fremont Chamber of Commerce. And the Fremont Chamber of Commerce, along with the Centerville Businesses and Community Association, the Irvington Business Association, the Niles Main Street Association, Mission San Jose Chamber, and the Fremont Adult School, welcome you to our candidate forum. We have a...[31.34][31.34][applause] Well, thank you. We're happy you would spend the evening with us. I have a few rules I want to read, and then we're going to get started right away. The first set of rules are for the candidates. And the first one is, please refrain from directly attacking each other during the forum either verbally or physically. Now, I know I had to tell you that, or you wouldn't know otherwise.
Dang.
Your response times are limited to 90 seconds. KK, KK, right there, will give you a 30-second warning and call stop at the 90-second mark. All candidates will be given a chance to make opening and closing remarks, those being 90 seconds as well. All questions are randomly assigned into groups of four and five, except for the yes/no questions. To the audience, please refrain from making noise while a candidate is speaking, booing, or applause -- so that was the last time you can applause -- distract from the event and make it hard to hear what is being said. No campaigning is allowed on school district property, and at a certain point, the audience will be allowed to ask questions. If you are interested in asking a question, please line up near the podium. Your questions must be substantive in nature and must -- oh, and have to be general, so that any four of the candidates can answer them, and you cannot direct your question to a specific candidate. It will be asked randomly. So with that, we are going to get started. Are we ready with the timer? Excellent. The first question is...
Excuse me, don't we get opening statements? Opening statements for 90 seconds?
Yes, and that is 90 seconds.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. First, let's start with Rick. Rick, please, when you're ready.
All right, thank you. Good evening. My name is Rick Jones, and I'm proud to say that I have served the community of Fremont for more than half of my life. I'm a 34-year Fremont resident. My wife and kids are third and fourth generation here. My wife and I are actually both retired Fremont police officers, and together we have served Fremont for more than 50 years now. A number of those years, we spent in our local schools, working with our young people. I'm currently the Vice Chair of the Fremont Planning Commission. I teach here at the adult school, and I coach softball over at Kennedy High. My goal is to make Fremont a premier destination in the Silicon Valley and the Bay Area. With our downtown project, as well as our Warm Springs Innovation District, we are poised to do just that. Smart development will not only increase our revenues, it will increase our services as well. And while it's important to look to the future, we cannot ignore our past. Our five historic districts, our businesses, large and small, also need to be preserved. Fremont is an incredibly diverse city, and I'm fortunate to have the ability to work with or to interact with residents on a regular basis. We have a highly educated population, and I believe that education and diversity lead to opportunity and prosperity for all of us. My years as a police officer and a teacher have taught me to be a problem solver on a daily basis. My straightforward approach to the issues would be a definite benefit to both the city and the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Dirk?
Thank you. We must take responsibility for our community, every one of us, and I believe that all the candidates sitting before us tonight believe the same thing. We all deeply care about the city of Fremont and what's best for Fremont. The fresh perspective that I believe sets me apart from the other candidates is, as the fourth generation to call Fremont my home, I have quite literally watched, and most importantly, participated in the changing of our city from that which I came home to from the hospital when I was born, to that that it is today, a dynamic, vibrant city. I treasure our city's history, but value and embrace its future. As a 31-year retail business owner, I'll bring the same excellent customer service that my business has become known for, making residents' wants, needs, and desires a priority. I am an independent candidate who wants to put Fremont customers first. It means being accessible and available to everyone in our community. It means protecting small business, as I sponsored AB 1581, a bill passed by the state of California that protected small floral businesses from deceptive advertising. That keeps sales tax local. My campaign committee consists of possibly the most diverse citizens from the political spectrum of Fremont, who have come together behind my campaign because of our common goal of wanting what's best for Fremont. I'll work to safeguard our heritage, honor our historic -- oh.
Thank you, Dirk.
And honor our historic districts. Thank you, KK.
Raj?
Good evening. It's been an honor and privilege to serve as your Fremont City Council member for the past year and a half. I grew up in Fremont, attending our great public schools, much like my kids are today. My parents taught me the value of hard work and to give back to our community. I learned lessons from my family of making sure you're educated so that you can mobilize in society, to treat everyone with dignity and respect, and to make sure that we celebrate the diversity of our community. I was also taught to help those that are less fortunate, to make sure that they are taken care of, that we are in it together to help solve our community problems. As I started my professional career, I realized one of the best ways that I could give back was to serve on the city council. I worked my way up in city government. I was a human relations commissioner, then a planning commissioner. I worked on the Chamber of Commerce as chairperson. I have worked on regional initiatives such as Alameda County Transportation Commission. Main priorities I'm working on in the next year are improving the quality of life for all Fremont residents, and to preserve our historic districts and to make them better. Public safety, I want to make sure Fremont is the safest large city in the country. We want to improve our economic base and make sure that small businesses are taken care of. Last but not least, we need to partner with our school districts to make sure we work as a team. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy?
Hi, I have been living in Fremont for over 20 years, and my daughter was born here. And I've been worked in the community service as a volunteer for 20 years, and this is the reason I come out to run the city office. And today, we can see many cities around the Bay Area or out of state, they are facing the financial bankruptcy. So for the keeping this city continue to remain good finance condition, I would like to set up a budget control committee after I sit in the city council office. Especially when the Warm Springs Project is running right now, the budget control is the best, is the first priority that we need to look at, too. And the top of three priority in my campaign, that is, first is reduce expense and increase income. Second is building this city while controlling the budget by setting up a budget control committee. Number three is beautify this city by adding one more duty to our building permit review board. This is the three top priority I would like to run, I would like to put into for my campaign to run this city council office. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave?
I am proud to call Fremont my home and my hometown. I grew up here, went to school here, and now raise a family with my wife, Teresa, who is an elementary school principal here in Fremont. My three priorities are a thriving pedestrian-friendly downtown that will be the social heartbeat of our city, an innovation district near our new Warm Springs BART station that will be a magnet for clean tech and biotech, and closer collaboration between Fremont Unified and our city to benefit all of Fremont's families. I'm the longest current-serving planning commissioner for seven years and a former chair. For the downtown, I led the planning commission to recommend that we extend the current boundary on Paseo Padre, a quarter-mile east to BART, and rename our BART station the Fremont Downtown BART Station, to make our emerging downtown a regional destination. For our innovation district, I am proud to have the endorsement of the Sierra Club, which shares my passion for looking for renewable sources of energy. One of the companies leading the charge is Emerge with its forever battery. Emerge's forever battery uses an element called vanadium, which does not lose capacity, a completely renewable energy source that will one day get us all off the grid. On closer city collaboration with our schools, I was speaking today to former California Superintendent of Public Construction, Delane Easton, who has endorsed me. As a council member, Delane worked to make closer collaboration work in Union City. It has worked in Pleasanton, and it can work here in Fremont. I have the experience, engagement, and the community enthusiasm to be an effective member of the Fremont City Council.
Thank you, Dave. Rakesh?
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank all of you in the audience and the chamber, and along with the other association, for organizing this candidate forum. Thank you very much. Fremont has been our home for the last 27 years. My wife is a family physician in the town. We have two adult daughters. They both are currently in the medical school, and we're all product of public education. I have lived and worked in Japan, up in Caribbean, and Texas. I have worked at Stanford for 18 years. I've been planning commissioner for the city of Fremont. As a planning commissioner, I did take part in developing the General Pond 2030 and supported businesses and affordable housing, which is very important. I've also served as the president of Niles Rotary Club, Chair of Olone College Bond Oversight Committee, and Board of Trustees for American Association of Physicians of Indian Origin. Currently, I serve as Chair of Olone College Foundation, President and CEO of a nonprofit organization, Board Member of Life Elder Care Salvation Army, and Olone College Bond Oversight Committee. I'm a local guy, a marathon runner for 25 years. I understand how local government works. I'm very committed to serving my community. It would be a great honor to serve Fremont resident as your council member. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lily?
Good evening. Thank you so much for taking the time to come join us this evening. It's been a pleasure for me to have the opportunity to serve and represent Fremont as a city for the past two terms as a school board member. I'm a proud parent of two students in our school district, and I've been a resident of Fremont for the past 20 years. During this time period, I've had the opportunity to see us go through some challenging times and have to make some very tough decisions while ensuring fiscal transparency and awareness for the public. We've been able to survive those difficulties and achieve steady district-wide growth in all of our schools, and helping our city is nothing that's new for me. It's a passion that I have, and some of the achievements that I'm really proud of include the recent historic agreement among the city and some of the developers to address some of the concerns. I think that Fremont is rapidly changing, but how we change is very important, and supporting smart development that includes those considerations is something that's critical for me. So I will work to maintain Fremont's fiscal accountability and transparency, ensure high-quality education and community resources, and improve safety and quality of life by increasing the Fremont's revenue stream and economic growth. And I also am very proud to have the support of the Oakland Tribune and Contra Costa Times because they recognize my fiscal awareness and support that effort.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Marty?
Hi, my name's Marty Frumman. I want to thank you all for coming tonight. I can tell you all have someone in mind that you plan on voting for based on the shirts you are wearing or the buttons. We're here to support your city, to do the business of the city, and everyone up here is a qualified candidate. We all meet the criteria for residents. I have, I spent 12 years working part-time at San Jose State. I work full-time for Oracle right now. I've been there 15 years. I do IT work. What qualifies me to be a candidate? What experience do I have? I don't have any direct experience in city government, but you don't have any until you get, you gotta get started somewhere. And I've thrown my hat in the ring with a lot of good candidates, and I'm doing the best I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Sayed?
Good evening, and thank you all for being here, and Chamber of Commerce for organizing this. My name is Sayed Ahmed, and I have been a resident of Fremont for almost 14 years. I am engineering by profession, and I have a master's degree in electrical engineering. I have two kids, both were born in Fremont, and they go to school in Fremont. Now about Fremont, you know, Fremont has very educated population. More than half of the people are graduate and a higher degree. We are in the heart of the valley, and we should be projecting Fremont as a technical hub, but unfortunately, we have a small town and mindset. Our schools are overcrowded, the roads are broken, and we have not done enough to bring new businesses, and that's why I'm running for the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for those opening remarks. Now for the questions. So I'm going to ask a question, and then I will indicate by whom it should be answered. The first question is, explain what you see as the role of the city council member and how they influence city policy. And that question is directed at Raj, Dirk, Dave, and Lily. So Raj, when you're ready?
Well, I like to say that the city council member is a board of director, and the CEO is the city manager. So collectively, the five city council members, myself and the others and our mayor, we dictate policy, we advise on budget, and we delegate the day-to-day administrative tasks to the city manager. And the way we can influence policy, there's many ways. One is indirect, which we have on a daily basis. So for example, today I had some realtors who had some concerns, so I raised the issue with the city manager, and he was working on it. There's other ways, which are more formal, which are through city council. So one of the strengths that I bring is that I try to focus on how we can accomplish things and work together as a team to get things done. I think on any city council member, one person can only do so much. You need to work as a team. And one thing that I have is that I have the ability to bring the people together to make sure that we can get things done at the end of the day. And I'm also privileged to have the support of the entire Fremont City Council, who believe that I should continue so that we can continue to get more things done for Fremont. Thank you.
Thank you. Dirk?
Yeah, could you repeat it, please?
Of course. Explain what you see as the role of the city council member and how they influence city policy.
Thank you. As Raj said, I think it's a good analogy to use a board of directors analogy when you contemplate the city council. And I've served on many of those, so I know that role. I think also what is an important characteristic is being a liaison between our city government and the residents of the city of Fremont. In my nine years on planning commission, I kind of served in that role, and I did extensive outreach with city residents. When a project came up, I sought input from those stakeholders that were affected by the various projects that were coming forward. And I always brought that to the dais, serving on the planning commission. Also, and I think Raj mentioned it, you're part of a team. There's five members there. No one council person is going to set policy. You may, in your arguments, if you're passionate about something, nudge one of your fellow council members one way or another, but basically, no. It is a team effort led by a strong city manager and a very well-prepared staff. Reflecting on, just again, my network in the community that I've established over my 31 years in business, I'm very well-networked with our business districts. I'm a member of many of them, member of the Chamber of Commerce, one of the oldest businesses to be a member of the chamber, and I will be an effective liaison in that regard.
Thank you. Dave?
I think the first and most important thing for any city council member to do is to exercise independent judgment. We do have a wonderful professional staff. I've admired what they've done as a planning commissioner, and more recently, as the Chair of the Oversight Board, where the mayor and the city council appointed me as a Fremont representative, working regionally with Supervisor Scott Haggerty and other taxing agencies to wind down our redevelopment agencies. So they do a great job, but we must exercise independent judgment. Just because staff says it's a good idea doesn't mean it is necessarily so. And on my website, during my years on the planning commission, I've cited five or six instances where I took policies that were proposed by the staff and improved upon them, including our sign ordinance, our public arts ordinance, our affordable housing ordinance, our climate action plan, our downtown community plan. Look at Bonacorsi for Fremont to see where I've changed those policies. And the way they were changed was, yes, you don't work by yourself, but you persuade by the force of your arguments, your fellow commissioners, and then they made a recommendation to the city council. The city council actually adopted those policies and enacted them into law. The other thing about being a city council member to effect policy is to use the referral power to say, this is an idea that I think is important that may not be on staff's agenda, and again, to work collaboratively with other council members. That's why I'm proud to have the endorsements of Vice Mayor Vinnie Bacon, Council Member Sue Chan, and Council Member Anu Natarajan, who realize that I will work collaboratively, will work cooperatively, and will create policy for the betterment of all of Fremont.
Thank you. And Lily?
Well, I think it's a very complex role, and you've heard a lot of different perspectives on what a city council member is, and there's the basic in terms of working with the city manager and with your fellow council members, but I think it's also critical, it's kind of serving as a bridge to the community. This is one of the things that I've had the opportunity to experience. Fremont is such a diverse city. It has 220,000 residents, and the needs are so varied in determining what it is that satisfies our community. One of the things I think that has been critical in ensuring that people have fair representation is to provide a voice and to be accessible to the public. And so that means going out and talking to them, whether it's at their schools, at the community organizations, and building those bridges to ensure that we have advocacy and representation for us, not just here in Fremont and with our fellow organizations, but also at a state level. And so I think a lot of people look at, when there's issues, the buck stops here in terms of the city council, but there's people behind that who make decisions from Sacramento and our legislature. So it's something that I've had the privilege to do, both state and for Alameda-Contra Costa County, is to explain why a number is not just a number and how policies really affect the people of Fremont, and how these are concerns that are important for us to ensure that our voice is being heard. And so if I have this opportunity, that's one of the things that I would definitely work as a mission to carry and ensure that all the voices of the people are being heard.
Thank you. Next question. Looking back on the most recent term of the city council, what city policies do you agree with or disagree with? And that question is directed at Rakesh, Rick, Nancy, Marty, and Sayed. Rakesh?
I think that's a little bit unfair question because I think I do trust the judgment that every city member and the mayor is taking under their information that they have available to them, so I can guarantee you, they're doing their best to make that judgment. But as far as my opinion is concerned, I might have disagreed, and I'll just start with the budget. I think, you know, if it came in front of me, last year you have kind of $3 million deficit spending, which were in good times. If you look at about it, we almost spent $10, $12 million in downtown and innovation district and all that, and we didn't spend much on affordable housing. We didn't spend much on streets. If the good businesses are going to come, the city is saying, well, we don't have enough police officers. We can't fill our pothouse, but we're trying to attract the top-class businesses. Those don't think, don't add up. So if I was there, I would say, okay, let's cut something here, and let's provide something that's going to create a better living environment, a nice, improved city services in terms of streets and public safety, and go from there. So I would have really had different opinion on the budget.
Thank you. Rick?
Thank you. Well, as Rakesh said, I really don't see a lot of negative things that the city council has accomplished. In fact, in the last two years, I think that our council has really taken a turn for the better as far as going out and recruiting economic development and bringing other companies here. We have Tesla here, and the staff has gone out and made an effort to draw in more of the green tech and biotech and high-tech companies to come into Fremont, and all of those things do nothing but increase our revenues, which in turn increases our services. They have increased our public safety services in the last couple of years by a number of police officers and firefighters. We now have, we have a fire station 11 over in the Baylands Professional area that has been sitting vacant for almost three years. Thanks to some of the financial decisions that the city has made and their responsibility, we are now going to be able to staff that fire station finally come January of 2015. If you think about it, that's the only emergency service we have west of 880, so it's critical that we protect that retail area over there that is responsible for a lot of our revenues and in turn, most of our services.
Thank you. Nancy?
Look at the city's budget pie chart. We can see there's a 44% of the budget being spent on police and the file department. And just at the top of the city manager and the city attorney, their annual income is $265,000 and $250,000. Two of them already take a half a million dollars from the city's spending. That is, that is, I think that is the reason on the highway, 680 and Highway 80, the conjunction area along the Mission Boulevard, every day when we drive to work or go to anywhere, that area is always jammed, and there's no budget or money spent on the road that we need to be widened and to, to benefit everybody. This is only the budget-wise, I think, that city needs to change. Otherwise, our street couldn't have good maintenance, because the street maintenance only occupied the budget chart 14%. This is, well, actually, I do appreciate their working ability. They are a very outstanding team, but this is just some sort of public project that we are so, we didn't pay attention to, to control the budget, to, for the project that can benefit every citizen, every residence in Fremont. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty?
If the city council was doing a poor job, we'd be having a recall election. That's not the case. The city council's doing a great job. They're building an innovation district and a downtown. It's something that's going to keep Fremont citizens in Fremont, spending in Fremont. It was a constant complaint, my daughter, growing up, there's nothing to do. This will provide something. It's a few years away, but it'll be a place for her to go to dine, have fun, and enjoy the company of her friends. Things I think we could do better, and it's not just one person, it's going to require everybody on the council to work together, and that's paying off the unfunded liability, working towards paying off our debt. These are good times now. Now is the time to pay it off. We can't... The fiscal cycle is cyclical, you know that. We have good times, we have bad times. Before we hit those bad times and we go into further debt, we should start paying off those, the current debt, so that we're not in worse shape the next time around. Thank you.
Thank you. Sayed?
I don't have enough knowledge of this, so I'll pass that question.
I'm sorry?
I will pass that question.
Okay, thank you. Next question. What is your take on the city's two big initiatives, downtown and Warm Springs? How will you get involved in those processes as a member of the council? That question is directed at Nancy, Marty, Raj, and Dirk.
Would you say, would you ask the question again?
Of course.
I'm sorry.
What is your take on the city's two big initiatives, downtown and Warm Springs? How will you get involved in those processes as a member of the council?
Well, actually, the Warm Springs Innovation Plan, that is a very outstanding project that I need to give a positive applaud to the city, city manager, manager team, because the plan that we have seen so far, that is really a sign that Fremont can convert into Silicon Valley. And according to the downtown, right now, we have a difference of district, and each district have their own downtown. They're being designed very artistically, and we can see the work has been done gratefully. Being a city council, that what we can do to oversight, to overseeing this, this plan, all the plans that are going on inside the city, is the best, the best way is to watch carefully about the budget control and to recruiting most of reputable architectural firm and construction firm to conducting this, this project inside city of Fremont. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty?
Yes, regarding the downtown... Yes, regarding the Downtown and the Warm Springs projects, they are projects. And if you have a degree or any experience in engineering, business, project management, projects have a defined start and end. And if it's a well-defined project, it has, it's broken down into pieces. And those pieces need to be properly constructed. We have to have a good project manager hired to take on the project, because the council members are not going to be here for the entire project. This project's going to last several years. We will come, council members will come and go, but we need to make sure while we are on the council, that the projects are defined, the project is defined, it's well-planned out, and it stays on task and within budget. That would be nice. And that's what I think as a council member, it would be important for me to do.
Thank you. Raj?
Well, I would say that it's a true honor to be on this city council, to be able to work on these two great opportunities. First of all, the Downtown is a great transformational opportunity to take an underperforming area and make it a destination place for all Fremont residents and hopefully, the Bay Area in the future. The 2008 retail studies showed that we had economic leakage, where people are leaving Fremont, out of our town, spending money outside of here in Santana Row, Palo Alto, Pleasanton. And this is our way of bringing that money back here and to create a place where people can hang out, socialize, and be entertained. The Warm Springs District is another great opportunity. It's the largest landmass anywhere in the Bay Area. It's over 850 acres near a bar station. And we view this as a 21st century employment center, where we will bring the young people, give them great-paying jobs, and have housing where they can stay there. And we'll also have a lot of amenities with restaurants, retail, and a lot of things to do. I happened to work on the committee that helped create the Innovation District, and that was because of the opportunity I had as chairman of the Fremont Chamber of Commerce. So we worked closely with the economic development, and we helped brand this district so that everybody knew that this is the area where the new jobs will be created. I'm hopeful that this will translate into a lot of good companies coming here to our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Dirk?
Thank you. I'm very bullish on both the Warm Springs Innovation District and our Downtown. As a matter of fact, our Downtown was initially conceived by a group back in the 1990s who got together to start that visioning process. While I was on Planning Commission for nine years, from 2004 to January of this year, I was fortunate to take part in the process in those nine years regarding both the Downtown and the Innovation District. So again, I'm very, very bullish on these projects. Why am I so bullish on them? Well, both projects will generate the property and sales taxes necessary to provide essential services to you, the citizens of this city. The analogy I like to use is recently I refinanced a commercial building. I raised my liability or what I owed on that. But the money I took out, I reinvested into the business, or will be reinvesting into the business, to generate more sales and be more relevant to my customers. The same is true with these projects and the City of Fremont, generating additional income to bolster our budget, provide us with the money to provide more police services, open up the additional fire station, which is moving forward in next year's budget cycle, and provide the amenities that our citizens want. So very, very encouraged by these projects.
Thank you. The next question is a lightning round question, and I want all the candidates to answer it, a single yes or no answer. We'll start with Rick. Do you support Measure B B?
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Definitely.
Me, yes.
Maybe.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Next question. What is your view on whether the City of Fremont is small-business friendly? Are there changes you would make, and if so, what? That question is directed at Dave, Lilly, Sayed, Rakesh, and Rick. Dave?
I think there's room always for improvement. If you asked this question two years ago, it was before the city introduced what is broadly termed as an ombudsman approach or a business liaison, which is actually a wonderful innovation that this council adopted. I commend Raj and the current council for adopting it, which helps small businesses go through the permitting process. That's an improvement. We also, though, have lost redevelopment dollars, and we need to figure out ways of replacing that income in our historic districts in Niles and in Centerville and in Irvington to make sure that we keep reinvesting those communities to support our small businesses. I know that the Economic Development Team is having a workshop on October 20th for small businesses. That's very, very good. But I've already done things on the Planning Commission to be business-friendly. On the sign ordinance, for example, there was a situation where the sign ordinance would have prevented or would have required small businesses to pay for their signs to be replaced if they were taken down for public safety reasons. I said, no, that's not right. If they put it up there and they followed the rules, they shouldn't automatically have to pay just because there might have been an act of God or an earthquake or something to replace their sign. So I built in the right of an appeal for a small business person to say, this is not fair. I shouldn't be charged that cost. So I bring that kind of tangible, practical, real-world experience. As an attorney that represents small businesses owners all the time, I understand the concerns. As a small business owner myself, I understand those concerns, and I'll bring that reality to the council.
Thank you. Lilly? Could you repeat the question again?
Of course. What is your view on whether the City of Fremont is small-business friendly? Are there changes you would make, and if so, what? Sure. Thank you for this question. I think that it's been a pleasure for me to hear about the small-business ombudsman, and it's great that we have people reaching out. But when I've been having discussions with some of the individual owners these past couple months as I walk through the town, I think that, an analogy I give would be myself in management. I think that a monkey on the top of the tree looks down, you see the smiling faces, and you hear great news and feedback from a lot of the reports and praises for the city. But when you talk to some of the individuals, that's not always the same story that I hear. And so by going out there and listening to some of the small businesses that are in historic districts and talking to some of the owners, it makes me sad to hear from some of them that when they work with other cities or they have locations in other cities, that they don't feel Fremont to be the most business-friendly and that there is room for improvement. And so I think that it's a challenge for us. I think there's a lot of things that are going well in terms of more of the outreach and tours that they're doing through all the historic districts, but there's definitely room for improvement. And by opening up the dialogue and reaching out to the small-business owners in historic districts, even through these challenges and growths that we're doing in some of the Downtown Innovation Districts and the focus there, I think we will build a better city, because it's not just bringing the businesses to Fremont, but to ensure their success and how we can work with them to ensure that they're able to foster here as a city.
Thank you. Sayed?
So one of the things that I can think of that we could make an improvement is that we should have a single point of contact for the business, rather than people going to the different people every time they come up with an issue and they want to go through the process, and they have to explain everything all over again. It will be very beneficial if we have one point of contact. Thanks.
Thank you. Rakesh?
I think chambers should know the answer to this question, and I give you one example. You go around the Bay Area, around the city, what you hear, we got the Bassett School District. We don't have to ask builder to come build houses here. We're the safe city. Now, when you go talk about small businesses, and we really talk to the people, and we all have experienced this as one of the last event, they say, Fremont drives us crazy. So many regulations. Why? Why we can't do what we want to do? I think city with the people involved in a small-business helping should have a forum like this, so that people can stand up and say, why do I have to do what I have to do? It's not about going everything through attorney office. It's about serving the business. It's about serving the community. Medical field is changing. Have you gone to a doctor, a specialist say, go get the appointment there, and you go there, and you go nowhere? There should be one contact person that every time a small-business walks in for doing anything, he or she need to see only that person, and that person take him or her through whole enchilada in the city. It's so easy. This city is not business-friendly. We all know it. We can sugarcoat it the way you want it. And I think city council has to think about, if we're going to say each department, you have to pay your bills, well, from where that bill is coming? By providing services to small businesses.
Thank you. Rick?
Thank you. And talking with a number of small-business owners, a good friend of mine has a small-business and a number of years ago, he did a remodel and changed a little bit of his service. And to sit and talk with him and listen to the frustrations that he went through in dealing with person after person after person from the city, it was like Sayed and Rakesh both brought up, if you have one person that you're dealing with from beginning to end, it makes things much smoother and much simpler. We all want to play by the rules, but it's difficult to do when the rules keep changing. You know, I had, on an even smaller scale, we put solar in our home. The gentleman who came out and installed it, came out, put a sticker on the panel. The inspector came out and said, well, you don't have the right sticker. You have to actually have an engraved plaque. And he said, well, last week, I put one on this location, and you signed it off. Well, that was last week. So it's things like that that really frustrate the business owners here and are driving some of them out of town. We need to be promoting our small businesses. Small businesses are the backbone of our country. You know, somebody started somewhere in their garage. They didn't automatically start as big as Facebook did, and, you know, over in this monstrosity they're building in Menlo Park. So you have to protect those small businesses and encourage their growth and their expansion and give them incentives to stay here in Fremont.
Thank you. Next question. When competing with other Bay Area cities, what do you see as Fremont's strengths and where do you think we fall short? How would you address concerns about our shortcomings? That question is directed at Raj, Dave, Rakesh, and Nancy. Raj?
Well, I think Fremont has a lot of strengths. You know, we are located right in the heart of the Bay. We're close to Silicon Valley. We're near the Tri-Valley. We're right across from the peninsula, and we are the gateway to the Silicon Valley. So we have worked hard to brand ourselves as a Silicon Valley city, and I think everybody has accepted that. Shortcomings, I can't think of too many. I do think that, you know, Fremont struggles with this identity of being the fourth-largest city, and I think that that's probably the biggest shortcoming, is that we need to start thinking like we are a big city. And, you know, it takes time to, you know, accept that. So some of the initiatives that we are doing are there to transform us into that fourth-largest city and to create an all-around Silicon Valley city. I do want to say a few things about the small-business friendly aspect. I think some of the things that they have mentioned, we are doing. One of the things I pushed for was a small-business ombudsman, which is a new position that helps as a single point of contact to make sure that from beginning to end, everything is handled. There's always work to do. We can always be better, but I would say we're a lot better than 10 years ago, and we're a lot better than even two years ago. So we're constantly evolving. We are a large organization. Things are getting better. We are becoming more business-friendly, and I would argue that this may be one of the most business-friendly councils we've ever had in our history. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave?
I'm sorry, Cindy, I was, could you repeat the question again?
Of course. When competing with other Bay Area cities, what do you see as Fremont's strengths and where do we fall short? How would you address concerns about our shortcomings?
We are fortunate to have not one, but two major projects, which was touched upon in the last question. Our Innovation District around our Warm Springs is a terrific opportunity. It is 879 acres around our new Warm Springs Bar Station. To give you an idea of the immensity of it, it's larger than the Financial District in San Francisco. This is a great opportunity to create good-paying, quality jobs, as much as 20,000 jobs in our high-tech and clean-tech sectors. We should be championing that every moment that we can, because it is the wave of the future, and it can create the kind of middle-class jobs that my dad had when he became a teacher at Washington High School, where he was able to buy a home here in Fremont in 1961. I think our weaknesses are not recognizing our strengths. We have 136 languages spoken here. We have 50.2% of our population is Asian. We can position ourselves not only for investment locally, but regionally and globally as well. And perhaps even look, I've had the opportunity of working with the Chinese-American Real Estate Association and many of our diverse communities here, of looking at different ways of attracting foreign investment into our city. But we also need to recognize that we need to preserve our neighborhoods. Yes, we're becoming more urban, but we're becoming, according to our general plan, more strategically urban. We need to also protect our historic neighborhoods, like the one that Dirk and I grew up in in Glenmore and Glen Manor 50 years ago and plus. So those are the challenges for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Rakesh?
Cindy, could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. When competing with other Bay Area cities, what do you see as Fremont's strengths and where do we fall short? How would you address concerns about our shortcomings?
All right. Fremont is strength, a great town. I'd love to live here, and I'm going to die here, I can guarantee you. Great schools. Our police and fires are great, doing the best job they can within the resources they have. I told you, I'm not a politician. I'm very realistic. I'm made in this country. I'm somewhat physically conservative. Now, if you really look at it, all these city council, you're listening for so long about Downtown. When I was planning commission, they had a wish list that we want a theater in Downtown or Midtown or Central Business District. Never asked the business who are going to create that. And I told them, this is not the place to put the theater system. Nobody coming here. Go to Pacific Commons. They stop Pacific Commons to deal with the people. Finally, where do we have Century at the Pacific Commons? So I think city council people are going for election as a politician. You can have all the wish list you want. You can say, you're going to create this, you want this, you want that. Each of you think about it. If you were the business, if you got to come to that Downtown, if you got to come to that Innovation District, at the end of the day, you have to make money and pay your bills. What communication city is doing with those people, I want to know, and I want to improve on that. And that's it.
Thank you. Nancy?
The strength that Fremont has is the location. We are in conjunction of the South Bay and the East Bay, and our price of housing still, compared to South and West Bay, was still low. And we are neighboring to them that they have a big company, and with this strength, we can attract the more big company to move into Fremont. And the other strength that Fremont has is Fremont has a different industry that being designed into very outstanding, in different character, like Niles has focused on art and music, and Mission San Jose has a Mission Church historical site, and the Central has that train station just converted. And Fremont has the other strength as diversity-friendly, as David just mentioned, the language we have. So diversity-friendly will attract more people to move into Fremont. Thank you.
Thank you. Another lightning round question, yes or no answer. I'm going to start with Dave on this. Did you support Measure E in the last election?
Yes, and worked to help it pass.
That's not yes or no, Dave?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you. Rakesh?
Yes.
Yes.
Don't remember. Neither do I. I don't remember that.
Rick?
Yes.
Dirk?
No.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. One more question. And pretty soon, we're going to start the audience question. So if the audience has a question, if you could come line up here, we'll let you ask a question. And again, it is not to be directed at a specific candidate, it'll be random.
Okay.
Next question. In your mind, what do you see as the key factors that will influence Fremont's ability to attract growth industries and jobs? What can the council do to impact these? That question is directed at Dirk, Lilly, Rick, Martin, and Sayed. Dirk, would you start, please?
Thank you. I think our Warm Springs Innovation District goes a long way in doing just that, attracting these businesses. Also, in my conversations with economic development and some citizens that knew a whole lot more about coworking facilities than I used to know, coworking facilities, which we have two for software development, these facilities are incubators for software startup companies. And what's great about this is it's very low cost for these innovators- know, co-working facilities, which we have two for software development, these facilities are incubators for software startup companies. And what's great about this is it's very low cost for these innovators to come in and get started in business. And as they do that in Fremont, we hope to keep them in Fremont as their companies grow and we are able to provide facilities here in Fremont for that. In addition to that, I'd like to see us start some manufacturing co-working facilities, which we lack right now. And in a conversation with our Economic Development Director, Kelly Klein, we talked about some of these and we got some references for them. And we've been investigating these co-manufacturing facilities that would also serve the same purpose, again, being an incubator for new business in our community, that when they grow, we will benefit from their growth here in Fremont.
Thank you. Lily?
Could you please repeat the question again?
In your mind, what do you see as a key factors that will influence Fremont's ability to attract growth industries and jobs? What can the council do to impact these?
Well, I think there's a lot of things that attract new businesses to Fremont. I think some people have cited already the location. And the other things that would be attractive for companies, I think, is having the support in terms of the processes. I think many people have already commented on being able to facilitate and engage them with economic development and interests. I've had the privilege also working with the Chamber of Commerce. I think one of the things that people look for when looking for businesses, whether it's companies setting up as a home or looking for their employees, to have opportunities for education and resources. And that's a thing that Fremont really can be very proud of. We have some of the best schools and the educated workforce here that they can draw from. And I think that having people that are able to commute locally, I know that, I was listening to Mayor Harrison this afternoon, talk about how one of the things when he heard from Tesla and talking to Elon Musk, that makes companies want to come here, is to be able to not just have companies come here and have their work here, but to be able to live here. And so creating the right type of housing and engaging those companies and being vocal and giving us their opinions on how to keep them here is going to be really critical for us to attract and keep the small business here. So the education aspects, the educated workforce, and the support services, whether it's affordable housing and the transit, are all critical in terms of advertising and promoting Fremont.
Thank you. Rick?
Thank you. Well, as any realtor will tell you, it's all about location, location, location. And Fremont is in a prime location for business to locate here, being between 680 and 880. And having our innovation district being at the, basically at the doorsteps of the new Bart Station coming in. This is going to be a prime area to draw companies from all over the place. You know, as I said before, we have Tesla there that's anchoring that location. We have recently brought in Gen Z. They relocated from across the Bay. They wanted to be a part of this district that we're developing. This district is hopefully going to bring in somewhere between 12,000 and 20,000 new jobs. That'll create local jobs for our residents here and really boost our economy. We're also looking at adding up to 4,000 residential units there, which is going to give those employees who are coming into these new businesses, the ability to live where they work. And if we can get some of these companies to offer incentives to new employees, to give them some kind of break on their housing as they come in and encourage them to live here, it's going to be a definite benefit to Fremont to have those people coming here, spending their money here, and not having to go other places. But the biggest thing that we need to do is sell Fremont as, you know, the new, this new innovation district as the place to be in the Bay Area.
Marty?
Yeah, it's about creating the buzz that Fremont is a business hub. And that's what we're creating. It's between 680 and 880. It's near Bart. It's near the bus lines. The MTA or VTA is putting in a station as well that goes all the way to Great Mall. There's going to be a connection between VTA and Bart. The fact that we have a large population of, a large part of our population is people that work in high-tech, work for these big companies that are in the valley, it's going to be more attractive for businesses to be in Fremont so that their employees don't have to commute, their employees are close by, they're not spending their time in traffic, they're able to come back to work at a moment's notice. It's going to be an attractive place to work and for a company to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Sayed?
As Rick said, you know, we are at the heart of the valley. The location is great. But the other biggest strength of Fremont is the people of the Fremont. If you really look at the profile of the Fremont, 50% or more people are graduate and above. So the people's strength is good. If the people live closer to work, you know, they are more productive and they perform a lot better. So, thank you.
Thank you. We'll take our first audience question. And I would just caution our candidates that this question will not, you won't have the opportunity to ask this question to be repeated. So I will start with our first citizen.
Thank you. My name is Will Matlak. I'm an author. I've been living in Fremont since 97. And I hear a lot of talk about the central business district that you want to create. The justification for that seems to be to prevent people from going elsewhere for retail and entertainment services. My question is, how do you prevent such a center from sucking the business from existing companies, existing small businesses in the five boroughs like a hungry sponge? And wouldn't the money be better spent in supporting these small businesses, which you all acknowledge have problems already? Thank you.
Thank you. And that question is directed at Raj, Dirk, Rakesh, and Nancy. Raj?
Well, thank you for the question. Again, I think that downtown is a great opportunity. The type of retail and restaurants that we are trying to attract there are high-end. They are those that don't currently exist in Fremont. So I see this as a win-win because the places that people are leaving our town are far away. And because they're far away, we lose a lot of the sales tax. We don't keep that here. So I personally think that we should continue with the plan of downtown, bring them to Fremont, bring them to our downtown. And then from there, they'll go to some of our historic districts and shop over there. I see it as kind of a spine. Fremont Boulevard will be that great connection between Irvington and Centerville. And you'll meet in the center, right in downtown. And this will be a great opportunity for us to define ourselves as a city and finally put our political will and all of our efforts and energy to make sure that we can make this a reality. I see this as a win. And I think that it will put Fremont on the map and it will create a lot of civic pride in our community. And it'll bring our people together. And hopefully, it'll generate lots and lots of sales tax. It'll create a lot of small business opportunities. And it will be great planning and a great place for people to visit. Thank you.
Thank you. Dirk?
Thank you. Great question. I've had businesses in Centerville, Irvington, Warm Springs. And over the years, since I've been in business, the question always comes up about our historic districts and investing in our historic districts. I'm a great believer in doing just that. How many times have we heard cities like Mountain View, Palo Alto, Pleasanton compare and say, why can't we have that here in Fremont? One reason is, we have five children, not just one historic downtown. We have five. And as you know, resources are scarce. When redevelopment was around, I was successful as the president of the Save the Center group to get allocated $13 million in redevelopment funds for the development of a performing arts center in Centerville because it was a catalyst project that would encourage private investment in Centerville and make it stand out. To this day, we're going to have Artist's Walk eventually built in Centerville. And it's called Artist's Walk because of the vision of the performing arts center in Centerville. The developers of that grasped that vision and were moving forward with it until redevelopment went away. The downtown will help generate the funds necessary to bolster our budget so that we can invest in our historic districts. And that's why I'm in favor of the downtown.
Thank you. Rakesh?
Oh, my turn. Thank you. I don't know if Dirk knew it, two of the cities that he mentioned, Mountain View and Palo Alto, that the Charter City, I don't think it has anything to do with it, but just FYI, because I was for Charter City. Can I get help with a little bit of questions because I lost my thought process?
Well, I think the concern, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, the concern is, will the new developed downtown
Okay, take the businesses away from. You know, this is the same thing I'm telling. If the forum is done between economic development and the city people who are responsible for the restaurant, and don't take me wrong here, you need to talk to the district. Well, we're trying to get these businesses to our downtown, to our midtown, to our innovation district. Is there overlapping? It's just like we have how many grocery stores, starting from, you know, even Target and Food Macs and everybody selling grocery around within a mile or two. So I think we got to be, as a city, really figure out what we need, talk to the people, make sure there is no overlap of the services. And again, I think, and I'm not hand-waving, I think it's all about communication. And it's all about figuring out that if we put another Jack in the Box next to the McDonald, it's not going to be good.
Thank you. And Nancy?
I think cities would love to see small businesses successful because they're generating businesses' sales tax to the city. So any small business that would require to have a market study to find its own unique market in the city, that is the only way that a city helped them to evaluate the possible uniqueness that you earn to maximize their profit. That is the win-win situation that the city can help and can attract more small businesses with a unique service into the city. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Dave Pepper. And before I state my question, I do want to say thanks to all the city officials because I think they all do work hard for the most part. And I think their intentions are good. But when I talk to a lot of my fellow business owners and neighbors, the biggest concern is expense control. And I won't go into a lot of areas with this, but there's definitely appears to be a widening gap between the income city officials make in terms of salaries, retirement benefits, and health benefits. So my questions for you folks are, what do you see or how do you plan on controlling those expenses specifically in the terms of retirement? Because I believe a lot of cities' retirement benefits are about 50% of what these current salaries are.
Thank you. And that question is directed at Dave, Lily, Rick, Marty, and Sayed. And Dave, we'll start with you.
I like the first part of the question, which recognized the talent of our city officials. No, I am serious because what it is, is that there's been a historic trade-off between the incomes that are earned by most of our city officials. What you focus on are maybe the city attorney and city manager that seem out of focus. But you've got frontline maintenance workers and frontline dispatchers that are working, you know, 60, 70, 80,000 dollars a year. But again, they're trading off a lot that they might have earned in the private sector. And I think the city council during the Great Recession did a terrific job of having a 10% across-the-board reduction in salaries, instituted a two-tier pension plan so that you have more pay-as-you-go-as-you-go-forward to restrict that. We only have 857 full-time employees in the city for 220,000. That's far fewer than most of our cities around here. We have done a lot to restrain the costs, but at the same time, we need to retain the talent here in Fremont. So I think, again, it tends to get focused on, and then you may see overtime for firefighters. Well, that's because it's actually cheaper to pay overtime to some of our existing firefighters than to hire new firefighters. And that's what the city has had to do. Our police ratio, we're just getting a few police officers back, but we're still far short in terms of the ratio. So yes, it's a problem, but Fremont's better positioned than any other jurisdiction, again, because of Warren Springs and our downtown, to raise our sales tax, to raise our property taxes, to begin addressing it. And we've doing it in a balanced way, overtime, and fiscally, in a fiscally prudent manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Lily?
Thank you. I think this is a very valid question. I know that when you look at salaries, sometimes if you compare it to individual salaries, it seems disproportionate. But you need to look at some of the individuals and how our city's expenses are compared to other like cities and sizes. And so I think that we are trying to attract quality employees to satisfy our needs. I think that there's very valid concerns about retiring health benefits. I know that's one of the concerns that we've talked about, is making sure that Fremont, while going through some of these good times right now, starts planning for the long term and addressing our unfunded liabilities. And whether it's putting some more to it in terms of paying down, not just the minimum, but actually making some impact. Analogy that I gave when I was talking to some of the media is similar to a credit card debt. And if you don't pay the minimum monthly balance at all, the exponential growth that you'll be experiencing in terms of future debt is a real concern. And that requires us to work very closely with our labor groups and to ensure that their needs are being met, as well as the concerns, though, for the citizens of the future. I think that another idea that we haven't really worked on in terms of attracting people, it's not just by salary, but also creating affordable housing. For me, it'd be nice to see some of our first responders, whether it's our fire, our police, or our teacher, to also have affordable housing that live in the area. So thank you.
Thank you, Lily. Rick?
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to see if, I know that the city has addressed this issue over the last several years. As Dave mentioned, we now have two-tier retirement systems. We have public safety that is now working up until age 57. Whether that's a good or a bad thing is yet to be seen. Personally, I think I would rather have a young guy come into my house and throw me over his shoulder and carry me out of a burning building than one of the old guys. But, you know, it is what it is. And we're all having to adapt to the changing economy. The other change that has been made is the employee health benefits have now, they now have a cap on them. They're not based on what the going rate is at the time of that person's retirement. So we have made some big strides in knocking that debt down. I think one of the reasons that we find ourselves in a hole, particularly with the health benefits, I know personally, in the six years since I've retired, my health costs have gone up 45%. And I really have a difficult time trying to figure out why we are having these increases from our insurance companies. And I don't think any of the cities were prepared for that kind of leap in premiums. And it's really caused an issue for a lot of us. However, Fremont has been ahead of the game for a number of years. We've, the employees have contributed to the retirement, unlike other cities, for probably more than 20-some years now. So the city has not been paying the bill all along. The employees have been footing a lot of that themselves, and even that has increased. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty?
Budget control. It's always going to be a difficult issue. You want the quality of service in the city. You want the protection of the law enforcement. You want the protection from the fire department. But you don't want to pay a lot for it. So what do we do, right? We have to pay them. We have to pay them a comparable wage to what is available in other towns so that we get the best talent. I was talking to the police chief at the candidate's orientation, and they hire one in 140 candidates. That means 139 people weren't, excuse me, weren't good enough for Fremont. And I'm glad that we have those kinds of restrictions that we're looking to retain the best. But going forward, you do have to look at those salaries. We need to make sure that the pensions are paid and all that unfunded liability is paid for. But as far as salaries go and raises go, you know, I've been at Oracle a long time. Larry Ellison isn't rich for no reason. Larry Ellison's rich because he doesn't pay, you know? He gets you on board and he sucks the life out of me. But I'm not saying that we don't reward our employees by giving them raises. I'm just saying that we reward the employees that are deserving of those raises.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sayed?
You know, I would respond to this question totally differently. What I would say, what can we do to increase revenue to meet that expense, extra expenses? If you look at that nearly $1 billion in sales is lost on the neighboring community. So Fremont generates 32% revenue from the property tax and 21% from the sales and franchise tax. And if you look at the growth rate on the sales and the franchise, it's only in the 3%. And if you look at the growth rate on the sales and the franchise, it's only in the 3% range. I think by attracting the high-end retail and having this downtown and attracting some other retail, we can increase the revenue. We can have people who's spending money outside the city spend money inside the city. And I think that's the best way to meet that expenses.
Thank you. Next audience question?
Good evening, candidates. By the way, thank you very much for sharing your thoughts on your love of Fremont and how you're bringing business to Fremont and families. Once they're here, though, we like to have fun. And so Dirk has talked a little bit about the performing arts. But the city has an ongoing theme of not really putting a priority on performing arts. We have two great pet projects, the downtown and the innovative district. Both have a lot of land, and you're talking about bringing a lot of workers here, a lot of homes and everything else. What are we going to do for our nighttime instead of going out to surrounding cities? So, you know, talking about a performing arts center, we've heard that it's not self-sustaining. If that's the case, then we should get rid of BART and AC Transit and the parks because they're not self-sustaining either. So the other way to have fun would be a performing arts center. Can you pledge to seriously look into presenting the idea of actually having a valid venue for the performing arts?
Thank you. And that question is directed at Raj, Dave, Rakesh, and Rick. Raj, we'll start with you.
Yes, so I strongly support the performing arts center. I think, again, the problem with Fremont has been is we want to make sure that the performing arts center is not something that we build one time, but it can continue to sustain itself year over year. One of the biggest hurdles in a performing arts center is the operational costs, which can easily be at least $2 million minimum. And to do it properly, we need to have the right kind of expertise and make sure that we have a complete, large enough center that's over 1,200 people. And it needs to be in a location where we can take care of the traffic and the impacts of people coming to our community. So with that said, I strongly support a performing arts center. We do have a plan for it in our downtown, in our new civic center downtown. But one of the things that we have to figure out is how are we going to pay for it? Are we going to take general fund money that could go for police officers, firefighters, roads and streets, pothole-type issues? And are we going to feed it into the performing arts center? So what I would propose is that we have some sort of a parcel tax or some sort of a tax measure where we, the community can tax itself locally via property tax and be able to fund it on an ongoing basis. I also think that some of the economic initiatives that we are taking will increase the economic base of Fremont. So if we bring more sales tax, that can, again, go back into more services. And one of those services and a great amenity in the community is a performing arts center. So I strongly would support that, but I think it's going to require effort working with the community.
Thank you. Dave?
Raj has defined the problem, but has missed out on really defining the promise of a cultural arts center. It would be a fantastic opportunity for a city. I mentioned earlier, we have 136 languages spoken. We've got a vibrant Indo-American, Chinese-American community. We've got a vibrant love of the arts in our community. My daughter participates in Starstruck Theater, Yoko's. I'm proud to have the endorsement of Lori Stokes of Starstruck Theater because she knows my passion for a cultural arts center. Let's not talk about phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four, that's 2025. Let's talk about in the next five to 10 years. And why we, how we make it a priority is that we make it maybe as a revenue measure across the city, not just locally, but looking at it as a venue. Yes, Raj is absolutely correct. It has to be self-sustaining and operational. But we do that by making it a world-class performing arts center where we can bring top-flight performers near our BART station, which is going to have ridership in both directions, but at the same time, being able to have our Yoko's dance not have to go to Chabot College or Lori's Stage One, or everybody else can be actually in our cultural performing arts center. So it's an opportunity for us to be, to get together as a community, to rally behind it, to generate interest and realize that promise for Fremont.
Thank you. Rakesh?
I'm all for performing arts center, and you already have heard a couple of ideas here. And I think no matter what we do, it's not happening for next five to 10 years. So what we do between then? I think Fremont is blessed to have some historical building, and Center Theater would be one of them. It won't cost that much, but we can start from there. We can create something that community can use and then wait. Now, I would certainly agree with a parcel tax. But the issue with City of Fremont has been, we have tried twice to put local tax, and it didn't pass. First time, I didn't support. Second time, I did because it was for right reason with right conditions. So I think issue here is that the Fremont resident trusting their city council, their leadership, in making right decisions to do the right thing with the money that they have. And once we get that, trust me, we will tax ourselves very well. Fremont resident will do it. There is a recent record of Washington Hospital, a school district, a Loney College, because community is not afraid to pay extra money for the things that they think are important for the quality of life. It's a matter of trust, and I think I would do as hard as I can work to create that trust.
Thank you. Rick?
I agree with everybody else. I think we would definitely benefit from having a performing arts and cultural diversity center here. We have so many different cultures here in Fremont that it would be an opportunity for so many of them to showcase their dances, their songs, their different types of performances that they can do and share that with the rest of the community. And whether we do something like a parcel tax, as has been suggested or not, I think personally that the residents of Fremont would be in favor of that. We have a very well-educated and well-paid community here. And I think that they deserve better than what they have been getting. And I think that in order to keep them here, we're going to have to focus on something like this. We don't want our residents to continue going out of town to other places for their entertainment. We want them to stay right here in Fremont. And by involving our local cultural groups and having them have the ability to perform at that type of center, as well as bringing in some, you know, nationally renowned groups from all over the country, I think it's something that is going to be very important and will vitalize our downtown area. And if we can't do it with a parcel tax, then I think that it's going to be time to start reaching out to investors and having them dig deep in their pockets. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next audience question, but before then, I just want to point out in case our candidates didn't notice, Kiki had to move to the back. I think we had a small IT issue there. So hopefully you can see her back there. Great, thank you. Our next, our next audience question?
Good evening. Thank you for being here. My name is Richard Matchinar, and I'm a high school senior at Mission San Jose High School. As a student, the most important thing for me is good schools with plenty of resources. What is your experience with expanding educational resources for students? And what do you plan on doing to help keep students who grew up in Fremont stay in Fremont?
Thank you. That question is directed at Dirk, Lilly, Nancy, Marty, and Sayed.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the question. It's a great one. Good schools with plenty of resources. This gives me a chance to circle back on the lightning round question that was yes or no regarding Measure E. And I was, if you noticed, the one that answered that, no, that I didn't support it. Well, I didn't support it insofar as the organization that I was taking the vote for, business mission statement, was does it enhance a positive business environment in Fremont? Now, being a small business owner, that specific measure impacted my business because I have what is called a triple net lease, where the property taxes of the building owner are passed on to me, the tenant. That personally impacted me about $2,000 a year, which may not sound like very much, but for small businesses today that are struggling to remain relevant, it's a great deal of money. As I did outreach to other business, to other shopping centers, Pacific Commons, Mark Ropeson, the Whole Foods Center, Weingarten, the Gateway Plaza, Rayleigh's, all those tenants have triple net leases where this impacted them. So that is my answer to the yes/no question. I was somewhere in between. But that said, keeping students here, we need to supply relevant and affordable housing to keep them here, as well as the jobs necessary that I believe will come through our Warm Springs Innovation District, the new jobs that we will attract here in the city of Fremont. So I think that that's a great combination to keep our students here.
Thank you. Lilly?
So, thank you. I'm very proud of our schools here in Fremont, and we've been recognized nationwide for our accomplishments. I think one of the things that's important for helping us, our students, provide the resources is to build some of those opportunities. We have great programs, and that's something that I think we could leverage between the businesses as well as with the schools, is that there are internships and there's also 40 hours of service that they can start building that relationship. A lot of students, and I happen to be in a situation now with a high school senior, and you're trying to figure out what's the next step and where do you go and what do you study? And having opportunities to see what the businesses are here and build those bridges. So bringing our workforce to those companies and developing those relationships are really important. Because when the students leave, they're going to want to be able to have jobs to return to that are high-tech, green-tech. And we've done some great relationships with Mission Valley ROP and with a lot of these different emerging companies to build those bridges. The other thing that we talked about is affordable housing and making sure that our students are able to come back and looking at different types of housing available. When I moved here 20 years ago, my husband and I were going through the process of paying off student loans and looking at what types of housing were available. And for us to be able to attract the students to come back is to ensure that they have high-paying jobs, to find locations that are convenient for them for commuting. Ideally, the jobs are here in Fremont so they can walk or use some of the other resources that we have. But if not, to use some of the mass transit.
Yes. Thank you. Nancy?
Well, if we talk about why Fremont need Measure E to support the school funding, let's talk about this, we need to go back to the budget pie chart that city arranged. If the majority of the money was used in for police and fire station, we don't have money for education. That is the reason we need to bring, we need to have a Measure E to bring income to support school system. And in regarding to the question, what were best, what were best prepared education to the students and have them stay in Fremont? That really, that we, city and education, school district, in education fields, they should, they should be able to provide a survey on what kind of company that are already in Fremont and what kind of job that this company and the city can provide. And then we can focus on providing the training to the students at school. So after they, after they graduate, finish college, they can continue to stay in Fremont. That's my answer to the question. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty?
Are you old enough to vote? As far as expanding resources, I think the resources need to be provided by the school district. As far as bringing students, keep, well, first of all, most of our students don't want to stay in Fremont. They want to go away to college, okay? We don't have a four-year university in Fremont, right? You're going to go to Cal, you're going to go to Stanford, you're going to go back east. Now, to get you back, that's where the Warm Springs Innovation District is, and that's going to attract businesses that hopefully you'll want to come back to work in. And hopefully, your parents will stay while you're gone, and that'll be a reason to come back as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Sayed?
So, the best way to build program is in coordination with the local companies. Work with the companies to have summer program, interprogram, where you can both learn and onboard together. And that way, you will learn about the technology and try to stay in here. Thanks.
Thank you. Next audience question?
Thank you. Craig Stechler, 28-year resident of Fremont. First, I'd like to thank all of you for putting yourself out there to run for a seat. Been there, done that.
A lot of work.
And I know how, you know, how much time demands there are on your time. So I really appreciate all of you taking that step. My wife is also a small business owner, has owned a business in Niles District for 18 years. And just want to point out that big companies, mid-sized companies have full-time staff to deal with the permitting process to get a business started. In a small business, you're trying to make decisions about what color you're going to paint your walls, what kind of floor coverage you're going to put on, what kind of locks, and then going through the permitting process. So I'd like to hear some concrete ideas from the candidates on how you would streamline further the permitting process, especially for small business. I tell my wife, I think she has a micro business, but, you know, one-person or two-person business, still, there's a big time demand, and they don't have the staff to deal with it. You have to do it yourself. Thank you.
Thank you. And that question is directed at Rakesh, Dirk, Dave, Lilly, and Raj. Rakesh, would you start, please?
Yeah, real quick, let me answer that young man's question, how to make life easy for younger people and...
Raj, we have to ask you to answer the question that was just posed. Thank you.
All right. As I alluded earlier, that, you know, when you go to the city, small businesses should have single-person contact, who is going to guide them through. And I think it's getting more and more popular in medical field, Kaiser doing this, other, because it just one person knows your issue, and he knows how to work it out within the city and make it happen. The second thing you have to deal with is that the people in the city who are helping you, who are paying them? Are you the one who are, at the end of the day, responsible for paying for that department to run its services? If that's the case, there is a built-in incentive not to help you out right away. I'm sorry to put it that way. Because if the city council said, "You got to pay yourself and provide these services," they got to figure it out how to have a business model that's going to make them survive long-term. So single-person contact, helpful to the small businesses, app test question. Say, two weeks, you're going to be in and out. If not, then we have to explain to you why not.
Thank you. Dirk?
Thank you. Another great, great question, Craig. I'm kind of going through the same process. We're moving, I'm moving my business to a new location. That's kind of my marketing right now. We're moving. And in so doing, I'm about to step into that permitting process. So I've experienced before, and as a matter of fact, before I stepped off, I met with Jackie Hall, our business liaison, and that really is a great program. She helped cut through some red tape right off the bat. And that's not to say that all the red tape has been cut away. I think it's an ongoing process with staff. And I think the advantage that I would bring forward as a city council person is my knowledge of staff. I've worked with them for nine years on the Planning Commission. I know them pretty well. I can hit the ground running in that regard. But as issues come up, and again, from my experience being in business in the various districts that I have been in business in, I've got a terrific network of business contacts, both through the Centerville Business Association, the Irvington Business Association. I think I'm in a unique position to really carry issues forward as they are communicated to me as a council member to staff so that we can address the situation as it evolves. But it's an evolving, business-friendly effort on the part of the city at this point in time.
Thank you. Dave?
One of the things I've done very consciously during this campaign is to promote local Fremont businesses, like Mission Coffee that catered our first event for our signing ceremony. And when we had our campaign kickoff, we had Das Brew come to our event. And Das Brew is a really good example of issues, even with Jackie Hall and the business community, where you may have the Planning Division say, "Okay, this is okay to have in an industrial area." And then the Building Department comes in and says, "Well, gee, this, because it's a micro brewery, it's got to fit certain regulations." And then you're dealing with multi-jurisdictional levels. You're dealing not only with the city, but you're dealing with ABC, you're dealing with other statewide regulations. So it's not a one-size-fits-all solution. But as an attorney, I will say, "Look, I'm an advocate, I'm a fighter." And when I see that kind of inefficiency, where you have lack of continuity, lack of follow-through, where one agency or one department is not talking to the other department, as a council member, I would go and say, "Let's knock some heads together. Let's get the people in the room, cut down the cost, and keep a great business like Das Brew in Fremont." And I can tell you that Valerie Boyle and the Newark Chamber and Al Nagy are... can tell you that Valerie Boyle and the Newark Chamber and Al Nagy are pulling a full-court press to take Das Brew out of Fremont. We got to keep, fight these wonderful companies right here in Fremont by making it a priority. And as a council member, I will make it a priority.
Thank you Lilly.
Well, as someone who has been in business and worked with a lot of different companies and a trade association, I think there's a lot of different ways to look at it. And I'm a solution provider. And I think about some of the low-tech as well as high-tech approaches. The low-tech, I think that there's things that we could look at in terms of frequently asked questions and putting something together, just simply as handouts, as frequently asked questions. On the high-tech side, we could create videos perhaps of, in terms of what they're looking for on the forms. Another thing that's an option to try to find out, we've heard many people tonight talk about how our city is not as easy to work with as other cities. So, from the best practice and practical side is to find out what are other cities doing that make it so much easier than us? And to do a survey to find out, how can we then try to meet some of those concerns? I also would recommend perhaps doing coffees to bring the permit office and the businesses together, for them to go out and to visit some of these chambers and different business associations, to hear what the concerns are from the people. And so those are just some of the different approaches. I think that knowing that we're in a place of issues is one thing, but try to find some solutions that could be feasible, simple, and cost-effective for all of us to try to concern and address the needs, I think are one of the approaches that we would want to work on.
Thank you. And Raj?
Yes, during my time on the Fremont Chamber of Commerce as a chairman, one of the things we realized was that small businesses were falling through the cracks. Our economic development department was doing fantastic with large businesses such as Tesla, Thermo Fisher, Lamb. But small business, for whatever reason, perhaps is part of the local expertise of the business. They don't have a government person to navigate the process. And so through all those issues, one of the things I proposed as soon as I got on Fremont City Council was that we need a small business ombudsman. And so that was a position that was created directly from that input that we received during the time on the Chamber of Commerce. And we do have Jackie Hall, we have heard a lot of great things about her, she's doing fantastic work. And she is coordinating between the different departments and being that one point of contact. There's always more work to do. We can always do better. You know, wheels of government are slow. And if you talk to any city council member or some of my colleagues in other cities, they will all say that their, people say that their city is not business-friendly. And I would say that we are getting better, things are improving. One of the things we're working on is changing the culture in City Hall and trying to get our inspectors to think of themselves as ambassadors. That when they go to a business, they need to give the message that we are one team. And so we are retraining some of them, some of them are being phased out, but over time, we are improving our business approach. I personally try to be accessible, I'm approachable, I'm one of the first city council members to have office hours, and I always work through these processes. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last audience question?
Hey, good evening, everybody. Just want to also say, it's kind of wonderful to have only two positions and sort of a verbal MMA match up there to get those. So it's great to have you all up there. I want to talk about the millennials. We've covered, you know, things like the Cultural Arts Center, which is wonderful. You've covered jobs for people here. You've covered education. You've covered trying to keep people in here because we've had small businesses. Now, but how do we keep the millennials here? Many years ago, there were nightclubs, there were comedy clubs, things like that here. They've all been gone. So you have people who are going to be here, working here, having, you know, but to go anywhere out, to listen to live music, to go dancing, or to listen to anything else that's smaller entertainment, they've got to go to San Jose, they've got to go to Oakland, they got to go across peninsula. A lot of people think it can't work here. I'd like to know your opinion of attracting these so we can keep those millennials here with something to do, which I am no longer a millennial, I understand that. I might hang out with them, though. But to keep them here and make those things viable and, you know, basically, that's it. Your opinion in how can we attract some of those here? Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that question is directed at Sayed, Nancy, Marty, and Rick. Sayed?
I am totally naive in this field, so I am going to pass that question.
Okay, thank you. Nancy?
Well, actually, just a few weeks ago, I pretty much, I enjoyed the live concert at Nile. I think that it's a wonderful setting that Nile has offered to this community. And to have a nightclub and a kind of dancing location in this city, I, because Fremont is really a family, family style, family, you know, a very good place for a family to raise their child. And with this kind of service, I think we would, personally, I will prefer they can be located in a neighboring city. I'm church person, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty?
Yeah, millennials are traditionally the younger group of my daughter and her boyfriend that aren't really looking for marriage, they're not looking to have kids, they're looking to make money and enjoy life. The downtown is where it's going to happen. The businesses that are going to be attract, were going to be attracting, they should be attracting for, the downtown area should be the high-end restaurants, the entertainment, and the rooftops that'll go above that, that's where these people are going to live. Because they're not the kind of people that want, you know, a house, a picket fence, a dog, or kids. So the downtown district is what they're attracted to. My daughter spends a lot of her time in Mountain View on Castro. I mean, that's where all the restaurants are, that's where the, all their fun is. And I think the downtown district, when it's done, is going to be where the millennials will be hanging out.
Thank you. And Rick?
Thank you. You know, I worked, I had the pleasure of working for nine years assigned to a high school. And so, quite honestly, one of the biggest complaints I had on Mondays was, man, my weekend was miserable. There's nothing to do in Fremont. Where do we go? What do we do? And so, you know, if you think back, though, you know, you talk about we did have some clubs a number of years ago. Unfortunately, some of the clubs that we had also drained a lot of our resources. We had a lot of problems at those clubs. And to be quite honest, it was not people who lived here in Fremont. It was people coming from out of town that were causing us all of the grief and all of the problems. But I think that, like Marty said, we have this downtown that's coming in. And this new generation is, they want everything at their fingertips. They don't have any desire to maintain a house or a yard or anything else. You know, to them, smaller is better. They want everything at their fingertips. They want to be able to go out their front door, walk to shopping, walk to dining, maybe go out and enjoy, you know, a little coffee bar or something after that, and be entertained, whether it be by, you know, street entertainment, such as some of the activities we have with Street Eats or Fuse or some of those kinds of things. All of those are going to be contained in that downtown area. And hopefully, it's going to keep them here in Fremont rather than having to run somewhere else to, to experience their nightlife. It is going to be a challenge, but it is something that is one of our primary focuses.
Great, thank you. Before we move to closing remarks, I'm going to do one last lightning round question. And I'm going to start with Sayed. Would you support a free public Wi-Fi zone in the new downtown or Warm Springs area?
Yes, I will.
Marty?
Yes.
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 Clean suite. Great.
The only one.
We'll move to closing remarks. And let's start right smack dab in the middle of the table with Dave Bonacorsi. Dave?
I want to thank the Fremont and local business associations for hosting this forum. The question for most voters is, "Who is the best qualified to serve on the Fremont City Council?" Tonight, I'm proud to announce that I have the sole endorsement of Steve Waterhouse, who for fourteen years was the former editor of the Fremont Argus and remains a longtime Fremont resident. Like many voters, Steve does not care whether I'm a Democrat or a Republican or which organizations have endorsed us. Before he decided whom to endorse, he watched the League of Women's Voters debate. He knows those of us who have been on the public stage for many years, and he knows our records. Steve came to his own independent conclusion to endorse me and endorse my vision and record of achievement in working collaboratively with others on the Planning Commission and in our community at large. On the Planning Commission, I've led and gotten things done, rewriting our sign ordinance to be more consumer and business-friendly and protective of free speech, promoting a bolder vision for our downtown and climate action plans, and strengthening our public arts and our affordable housing ordinances. Again, I want to direct you to Bonacorsi for Fremont, which is a four, forfremont.com, with links to our webcasts. I also invite you to come next Monday evening to the Vine on Niles Boulevard for a campaign event featuring local musicians Michael McNevin and Patrick Landesa, and showcasing our local arts and music organizations like Music at the Mission, the Fremont Opera, and the Mission Peak Wind Symphony. I respectfully ask for your vote on November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. Rakesh?
Just to start with, I just want to say that our city staff is doing a great job. I think it's the issue of the policies and we making sure that we ask them to do it. And again, want to thank the organizer. Thank you very much. And for all of you in the audience sitting here, listening, all of us. As I mentioned in my opening statement, I'm a local guy who loves Fremont. I have served Planning Commission for eight years and understand how local government work. I am an independent thinker and a good listener. Furthermore, I am not aligned with any for-profit venture, special interest group, business, or other organization that would preclude me from voting on issue that are important to the city of Fremont and its residents. As your councilperson, I will work to improve public safety, work on downtown and Warm Spring Innovation District, address unfunded liability, bring biotech, green tech, high-tech job to the Fremont, and support affordable housing. I am people's candidate. I'll work hard to meet these goals. If you're looking for a candidate with experience, political independence, and no special interest affiliation, I'm your candidate. I am your first choice on the ballot, just remember that. And I will be honored to have your support and vote. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Lilly?
Thank you again for, everyone for coming this evening. I want to thank my fellow candidates and most importantly, I also want to thank all of their families for their support. Because I think all of us work as a team and we wouldn't be able to be here today without that. I've had the privilege and opportunity to represent Fremont as twice elected as a school board member. And I have a proven track record. One of the things I think it's important is to know where you've been. And I've been a resident now for twenty years and have really gotten to know the community. And I know where we are because I've had to have a hand in it. And I've had the opportunity to provide effective governance and fiscal responsibility. If you looked at the board and how we've been able to manage and maintain through difficult times, I think you'll see that, you know, we are a board that thinks of community solutions and works and partners with them to ensure transparency. I'm also a dedicated advocate because I think that right now, as we're going through a cusp of entering, you know, massive phase of growth and development that we've heard about so much tonight, is to ensure that we have somebody who takes the time to listen to the people. And I'm somebody who has prided myself on being able to spend time in the community, whether with business associations, civic organizations, schools, or different community members, to ensure that your voice is being heard. So if you support me on November 4th, I am eight on the ballot. So eight is great. And it's a lucky number in Chinese. I hope that you will do that and support me. And I will have the chance to continue serving in a different capacity.
Thank you. Marty?
Yeah, I want to thank everybody for coming out. It's, this has been very informative for me as well as you. I've had an opportunity to be at a lot, not a lot, several of these different types of forums and listen to these other candidates. And every one of them's qualified to do this job. Everyone's passionate about doing this job. And the city is going to benefit no matter who gets the job. I really believe that. I threw my hat in the ring because I wanted to do something for the city. And here I am. I encourage you a lot, like I said at the beginning, a lot of you are wearing shirts or buttons, you already support somebody. But I encourage you to look through the entire list, find the way to the bottom, and consider the person at the bottom as well as the top. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sayed?
Thank you all for being here. Like Marty, I threw my hat in the ring because I wanted to serve the community. And this is the first time I'm running for any public office. I did not take any single penny from any group. I am not being financed by anyone. You know, my campaign team include me, my wife, my ten-years-old daughter, and my close friend. So, and I'll be privileged and honored, you know, if you give me your thanks.
Thank you. Rick?
Well, thank you all for coming. You know, like Sayed, I have a very small campaign, consists of my wife and her mother, actually. So I have someone, at least an adult that goes with me in passing out our materials and such. But, you know, I have served this city for more than thirty years now. And it's become a passion to be out and to be among the residents here. One of the best things about this experience is all of the people I've been able to meet throughout the city. And, you know, I think we have a very diverse population. I think we have a lot of very well-educated people here and a lot of very highly-paid people here. And they deserve the best that we can give them. I spent almost thirty years as a problem solver on a daily basis, focusing on community relations and focusing on the safety aspects of day-to-day life. I, like the others, I, or some of the others, I don't have any ties to developers or anyone else that would preclude me from voting on any of the issues that are coming to Fremont. And there are a lot of exciting things that are coming down the road here for us. So I am honored to have the endorsement of Mayor Bill Harrison, former chief Craig Steckler, and the Fremont Police Association. And I would appreciate your support and your vote on November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. Dirk?
Thank you. As I said earlier, there should be no question in your mind that each of us up here want what we feel is the best for the city of Fremont. I've campaigned on taking responsibility for our community, and I want to explain what I mean by that. I've built two small businesses. In my thirty-one-plus years of business, I've either had a business, lived in, or both in four of five of Fremont's districts. Being that intimate and knowledgeable of Fremont, I've taken responsibility, meaning that I've immersed myself in those districts, not only taking, as I did business there, but also living by my grandfather's words, which were to take responsibility for your community and give back. I think I can stand on my record in that regard. Passed Fremont now Niles Rotarian and proud of it. Thirty-one years working with our business community on the Festival of the Arts, eight years as its chairman. Never missed participating in a Fourth of July Parade or a Niles Festival of Lights Parade. Participated in the Festival of India Parade. Two-time chairman of the Fremont Chamber of Commerce. But these alone do not qualify me as a city councilperson. In my view, what does qualify me is my knowledge of the city and staff, my knowledge from my nine years working on Planning Commission on how projects flow through our city, and the public process necessary to build consensus. I am well-networked through our entire city and will not take, and will take responsibility, but also provide excellent customer servant, customer servants.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm number three on the panel.[1673.76][1673.76](Laughter)
Thank you. Raj?
As the only candidate that is currently serving on the Fremont City Council, I'm proud of the good work that we have done. And I want to continue to build on the progress that we have achieved together. I own businesses in two districts. I live in the third and I shop at the other two. In the last one year and nine months since I've been on the city council, we've gotten things done. We balanced a structurally balanced budget. We successfully handled the loss of redevelopment. We kept our city safe. We collaborated with the school district on a new school. We grew our economy by increasing retail and entertainment at the Block and Central Business District. We brought in new businesses and we expanded existing ones like Delta and Lamb and Thermo Fisher. We helped small businesses by creating a new position, small business ombudsman. We created a new innovation district. We broke ground on our new downtown. We invested an additional six million on street and roads. We opened the library on Sundays. We are building success for everyone in all parts of our city. I'm working hard to bring people together to make sure at the end of the day we get things done. I have the support of the entire Fremont City Council and Mayor Harrison. And I want to work hard and be accessible and be available for the next four years. I will dedicate myself on a full-time basis in these next four years to make sure that we can implement and achieve the vision that we have brought together. And I look forward to serving you for four more years. I humbly ask you for your vote and your support on November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. And Nancy?
Property tax is the major top revenue bringing to city with the amount of seventy-four-point-two million. So if we can attract more people to buy housing in Fremont, we can generate more property tax to build this city. Seeing the bar station, Bar Warm Springs Station, building up day by, day after day... Seeing the bar station, Bar Warm Spring Station, building up day by, day after day, we can, I feel exciting about Fremont is moving. And that is the reason, not just that we have the major project that's supported by government funding. Each household, on each household, I really wish that I can see that each household can participating with, in the support of my project with the architectural design to renovate your own house. By doing so, I would like to add one duty to the Building Premier Review Board, and I asking for your support, one of two votes to give to me. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes the forum this evening. I want to thank our candidates. It takes a lot of passion and commitment to do what you do, and we appreciate your willingness to serve our city. And I want to thank our audience, of course, for being here. Your participation in local government makes it easier for us to continue to grow to be a great city. And of course, I want to thank our partners, and that's the Centerville Business and Community Association, the Irvington Business Association, the Niles Main Street Association, Mission San Jose Chamber, the Fremont Adult School, and of course Walter Garcia for his filming of the event. Thank you so much.[1778.51][1778.51][applause]